All right, there we go. Hi Susan, how are you?
Hi, good, how are you?
All right, all right.
I never know if this laptop is really going to connect me. It's very stressful every six fifty-five. There's one meeting it didn't and Bill sending me texts saying, are you there? I go, yes, I'm here, I'm trying.
Oh, my gosh. I, my, my boss always called it. The PowerPoint moment, you know, you never know if technology is gonna.
Right, work for you or not.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so I better get my. Right, still organized here. How you doing, Bill?
Hi Theo, how are you? I'm all right.
All right, glad to hear it. Nice to see you too.
Hi Susan.
Hi.
All right. I've done my, my little housekeeping to empower the world, yeah. So what's the, the vista behind you?
It's um. The channel where you can see the reflection in the glass of the rest of our office, but.
Yeah.
The building with the big. White wedge on top, that's Atlantic Wharf.
Okay.
Which is on the corner of Congress and Atlantic.
Got it, got it.
Yeah, so the channel is pretty much out there, the children museum, Martin's playground right below us.
Yeah.
And then looking towards the financial district.
Nice, very nice.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Reminds me to change my name on this mic.
Yeah. Stop. Well, I hope Thanksgiving will be. Calm and peaceful and not. Not chaotic.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's um. You never know.
Yeah. I'm at her.
Are you staying local or traveling?
Local.
Local, yeah.
They like, you know, Tingsborough and then Stoke, I mean, that's pretty local.
Yeah. All right. Wakefield and Bedford.
Up there.
Yeah.
Unless we get seventy-seven inches of snow.
Right.
Right. And uh. Then the planning board takes control because it's all about snow removal and snow storage.
No storage drainage, yeah, curb cuts.
Yeah.
Trash location.
Do you have water back yet? That's all that.
That's right, because that was Green Street, yeah.
Yeah.
I was lost in my own world, what happened to Green Street?
Water main break.
Yeah, we have water, we never run away, it just decreased quite a bit, so.
Okay.
I can't believe this is the third time it's broken, but.
Oh, it's third?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was second.
No, two combat days and now a Thanksgiving, so. Um, yeah, they just need to replace the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, the last one I knew it was a twenty inch, this was a sixteen inch.
Wow, this was a sixteen inch, this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it all comes from the water tower and it just, I think it drains the thing out, so.
Well, I hope not too many people are impacted and, right, and then we can remediate it for the future, for sure. Um, we are all here, so let's, uh, let's call our meeting to order and we do a quick roll call. And Jim Hogan.
Here.
All right, Matt Lowery.
Here.
All right, Bill Spalding.
Here.
Megan Minison.
Here.
And myself here. And really delighted that Susan, you're here with us and Erin Kokinda is not available to be with us this evening. So this is just us. Item two is approval of the minutes. For October twenty-fifth and November fifteenth. Taking them in order, October twenty-fifth, does anybody have any edits or comments? A motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bill. All in favor, Matt Lowery?
Yes.
Jim Hogan?
Yes.
All right, Megan Minison?
Yes.
Bill Spalding?
Yes.
And myself, yes, terrific. Um, and for November fifteenth. Any edits or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Thanks, Jim.
Second.
Second, thanks, Matt. All in favor, Bill?
Staying.
All right, right, Megan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Terrific. Um, our third item is the A and R plan for Eight Myrtle Avenue, which I think that's why. Mr. McGrail and Mr. Ryan, y'all are here. We, we did receive an updated plan this afternoon with the setbacks to the Lucas buildings. I'm not sure if folks got a chance to see it. Did, did y'all see the email? Okay.
Yeah.
Very good, all right. Well, with that said. We can turn it over to Brian and Darren if you guys want to. Introduce this.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record attorney Brian McGrail, representing Rybo Inc. Who was the owner of property at Eight Myrtle Terrace, with me tonight is Darren Ryan, he is the president of Rybo Inc. And this is a, I think, a very straightforward A and R plan. It's, I can bring it up on the screen, and I would like to say, we very much appreciate the, uh. The reach out on the deficiency on the tie line, so thank you for, uh, thank you for kind of letting us know that, to be able to send that plan in. Very much appreciated. So, am I, could you please let me share, Mr. Chair?
Gosh, I thought everybody had the power, how do I give you the power? This is ridiculous, I'm sorry.
Well, the alternative, Mr. Chair, you could bring up the plan if you want to do that.
Yeah.
That works.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Again, this is, I think, a pretty straightforward A and R plan, you really don't get two more perfect lots. Meet all the requirements of zoning, it's labeled that all the structures are going to be raised. Each lot has a hundred feet of frontage, Myrtle Ave is a public way. And, you know, as you know, those are the, those are the main concerns for the planning board. On an A and R plan, these lots also meet all the lot area requirements in the single residence zoning district where they located. Over two, over twelve thousand, Lot One has thirteen thousand four sixty-seven, Lot Two has thirteen thousand oh ninety-one. So properties in a significant state of disrepair. And Darren's company purchased it, the building will be raised and two single-family homes will be built on two legal conforming lots. Happy to answer any questions?
That's terrific, I appreciate it. Yeah, um. I think I've gone through it, I think it meets all of our requirements for, for sure. Does anybody on the board have any comments or questions? And I'll, I'll give a shout out to Jim for noticing that the setbacks were missing, so that's appreciated.
I, I don't have any questions or concerns, this is pretty straightforward to myself.
Yeah. Agreed. Uh, so I know you're still gonna need to deliver. A new Lilar for this. But we, we can, we can approve this and then move forward.
Yes. So. Yep, well, I'll coordinate that with Erin, we'll get that down to, to the town hall on Monday.
Great.
And, and also, Mr. Chair, the application is going to have to be signed by you, I think you'd, you'd sign that with Erin, so I'll coordinate that with her also.
Yeah, okay, very good. Yeah, I can do that Monday or Tuesday as well.
Thank you.
If there aren't any other comments, I will stop sharing and we can take, oh yeah, Jim.
Um, in that case, motion to accept the approval of not required plan as amended by, by the applicant. This day to include the setbacks as denoted.
Second.
Second, Bill. And.
Is that, if I just could, could say, ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I assume from the current planning board lingo that accept it means that it also to endorse it.
Yeah, how about, I'll make a motion to endorse the plan of land, Eight Myrtle Avenue. The Sessas parcel twenty-four dash two sixty-five. Oh, for a Wakefield, Massachusetts, prepared. For Rybo Incorporated. One oh one. Converse Ave, Mullen, Massachusetts.
Second.
Just, just to make it official.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Since, yeah, Attorney McGrail is correct, we don't approve any of these, we, we accept them, we just endorse them, so.
All right, great, thank you. All right, I'll stop sharing and. All in favor? Jim?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Great, thank you, thank you so much, and again, thank you, thank you, Jim, for pointing that out and for. You folks sharing that with us today to allow us to get a resolve to get this done tonight, so thank you very much. And I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you, you too.
Yeah, you as well.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for jumping on so quickly, so we don't have to talk about this at the next meeting.
Yeah. Have a good Thanksgiving, everybody, thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, guys.
Thank you. All right. That's great, item four is update on MBTA communities. That's, Jim.
Yeah, so I think the, the only thing I have is I made a couple tweaks, but not anything substantive to the presentation that we'd reviewed previously. Mostly just adding additional supplemental information to the back end of the presentation. If members of the board are still in alignment, I understand that we're gonna calendar a. And, and question and answer sessions in, on the meetings in December thirteenth. January twenty-fourth and February twenty-eighth. And then after that, refer the matter to the town council. I did connect with Mr. Mayo, the town administrator regarding that methodology, he's on board and I think we're actively working on what that working group. The membership of it looks like in the final condition as well as the, trying to figure out what the. Structure of that to define the, you know, the, the feed, take the feedback that we get on the front end as well as the input from the different members, but. Unless anyone has any specific questions or concerns, I don't know if we necessarily need to go over it, just getting those, those three meetings calendared. At this time, I think is really the, the next step.
Yeah, I, I agree, and we're, we're on, yeah, we're on track. To do that, the next, our, our next meeting, we will have a couple things also on the agenda, but. But we should, we'll definitely be able to have time, so, for sure. So in terms of making it public, we talked about, Jim, you were gonna write a letter to the item. And we were basically all gonna talk it up wherever we can, and so. I will. Uh, make sure to email it to the, the, the working group, the master plan working group, and ask them to. Help get the word out through. So. I, I, I do hope over the, the next three meetings, we, we get a fair, we get some attendance, because, you know, people really are. Interested in, in the nuts and bolts of it, you know, the building height or things like that, and. Be good to be able to have those discussions. In kind of a neutral way so that people are able to ask questions and just entertain things. So we'll, we'll make sure that. Those, those are on the calendar. Um, what's the, and then. The, when, when does the working group form?
I think that's, I think that's some of the stuff that we're trying to figure out with the members of the town council and, and the administration. I, I think the intent right now would be to have it start sometime in late Q one or early Q two of twenty twenty-three. And then extend, honestly, we're still trying to figure out exactly what would make the most sense. Uh, in terms of the cadence of meetings and the final membership. So I, I think that. We had a productive conversation with Mr. Mayo, and he's gonna go back to the relevant members of the town council. Where we were kind of going back and forth, myself and Steve and Aaron, and kind of where we thought made the most sense would be. Two members of the planning board, two members of the town council, depending on their interest, but we think two is probably the right number. A member from the ZBA, uh, mem, uh, Aaron, and then a member of the environmental sustainability committee as like the core group of seven. And then as needed, bring representation from Concom, DPW, engineering, Wickel Gas and Light. Other members of, you know, that may be required, you know, on a one-off basis, but to have the core of the working group be primarily. Planning board, town council, ZBA, and then the environmental sustainability committee.
That's terrific. All right. That's great. Let's see, there's no other discussion, item five, our items not anticipated. The, um. All right. Yeah, um, does anybody have anything in terms of that?
Yeah, the kind of thing I have is the. Subdivision rules and regulations, I've been trying to find enough time and struggling to format this. And I'm not, I, I need someone who's a little bit more adept in, in doing this to kind of go through it and just organize it better. So that we can then send it on to DPW for the review, so. I don't know if anyone here has any time and any. Ability to go through and try to set the format of this up. So it, it's sort of formatted now to look okay, but it doesn't really work properly for. Margins and. Bullet points, things like that, so.
Yeah.
Well, Matt, I can't promise about time, but I, I do love doing this stuff, so I could, I could take a crack at that. Trying to think, the latest version, if you want to send it to me, because I, I have like four versions.
Yeah, I've got the most recent version, I was also trying to work on a. Kind of like a, a former version with. A red line of where you would find things, and it's just, it, it. You're hopping all over, I basically moved sections, we've realigned things, so I, I think I'm gonna abandon that, and we're just gonna do a. A new version of what we're expecting, give that to the DPW, because you're just gonna go through point by point and they're gonna review it, we're gonna re-review it, and then. Uh, it's gonna be a wholesale change of the rules and regulations, it's gonna be similar to what we had, but. There are some new sections and. Some additions, some things have swapped, so it's kind of hard to have a roadmap of where things are.
Right, I agree that it's more of an overhaul than a revision, so I like the idea of taking a new approach to it to see what makes sense in, in the order. So I, I could do that.
All right, I will get that to you. Sometime after the holiday.
Oh, um, if you do get it to me, like before the holiday, I have some time this weekend, so.
All right, I, yeah, I'll see if I can get it to you tomorrow then, so.
Yeah, I have some time this weekend, after that, I don't know, I don't know what December is gonna bring.
Yeah, and I'm working on my schedule for work too, and it's, it's pretty jam-packed, so.
Yeah, yep, that's why I'm here, I've got a couple more things to get out before I leave tonight.
I'm, I'm happy to help as well, so.
Well, Theo, what I'll do is I'll take a crack at reorganization and I'll send it off to you just to, for just some. A, a quick check, and then we can send it back to Matt to see what he thinks about how it's organized and if it makes sense. I might even come up with like option A, option B, because I feel after reviewing it previously, that there's two specific ways that this can roll. Obviously, the steps and what we, we want to see, but you can see there's a natural grouping to some of the items that we might want to put together and have it a little bit out of order, so, yeah.
It's mostly for me, it's, it's breaking up into sections and then subsections and then.
Yep.
Numbers to letters to numbers to Roman numerals to hieroglyphics after that, so, you know, it's all over the place.
I'm just gonna use emojis.
Please don't, I, I hate pictures.
I know, I know.
Well, we are ruled by our bullet points, that's really a sad commentary, this is not.
Well, we, we need to be able to call out what's deficient on, and you need to go, you know, basically in order, so. Having an emoji in there was really gonna be hard to describe in a, in a meeting.
No love for wingdings, fonts?
Uh, not really, so.
All right, we gotta have a planning meeting on April first. All right, thank you, and. Yeah, that's definitely been a. A much appreciated effort. The, does anybody else have any other items?
I, I do, but it's, it's more about some of the ZBA information that we received. Um, I don't have it in front of me, what was the due date that we had to get back to the ZBA?
So we had, we had two items, December fourteenth was the due date for both of them.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, one, I was hoping maybe we could talk about today, which is. The three fourteen, three thirty, three thirty-six Salem, which is that, yeah, because we've, we have seen that before. The other one is a Pren, uh, ten Broadway. That's the special permit where they want to do a hundred and twenty-four, hundred and twenty-nine. Unit apartment building, that's got a lot more documents, and so I thought we could wait to do that on, on the thirteenth.
I just wanted to bring up that, um. Somewhat impressed with how the Salem Street project that they worked in, the parking underneath, the surface spots. The turnarounds for the two residents behind it and the easement that allows a drive to it. Kudos to the, the planning on that, I haven't looked in the more detail of where does the snow go, where does the trash get picked up, how does that all work? But I have faith that the ZBA is gonna work that out, but I didn't know as a board if we want to make sure. That. Comes from us to them.
Bill, I, I conceptually agree with everything you just said, I did look a little bit at the. The, where the trash room was and where kind of the snow would go. In, in my mind, I believe that they have sufficient, or you know, they have areas that look, you know, like a reasonable plan. For lack of a better term, so I, I feel pretty good about that. When I looked at this, the, the only things that I felt would make sense for us to comment on as a board is, was not clear to me. If the project as currently constituted is going to be eliminating the, one of the, the massive curb cuts. That's in the existing condition, which I think that if we're, if this be, is being redeveloped, I think that the one curb cut that's required. That's being maintained on, I believe, the south of the site or the, maybe more east, or sorry, west. I think that would be appropriate to remain, obviously, to provide access into the site, but I think the other one that is currently existing should not continue to remain and be closed off. Also, it was not clear to me as if they were maintaining public sidewalk in the front of the property, so I think that would be something that would be appropriate for us to comment on as a board, that, you know. There should be a continuity of sidewalk in that area, and then the last thing that I think would make sense is, based on my back of the envelope numbers or calculations, I think that eighteen percent of this roughly corresponds with three affordable units. I think we should probably put in writing advocating to maintain those units to the ZBA. As a, you know, I think it's a matter of public policy that our board has specified within the underlying zoning and to, you know, ask that that be maintained. Because there's nothing in terms of affordability that I can see that's been documented in any documents submitted to date.
Terrific, very good points. And thank you for the, for the observations and especially the, the affordability.
I. I, I would like to see, and I know we've, we've commented on this many times, but it was. Sort of heartening to see that the Wakefield Gas and Light Department is behind solar so much on at least one project in town. Sort of heartening to see that the playful gas and light department is uh behind solar so much on at least one project in town. Um it would be nice if a lot of these larger developments incorporated solar. Uh inner designs, um I think we the town has missed a huge opportunity to capture. Some some generation on these rooftops that is just kind of passed up at this point, so. I know we've we've suggested it before, it never seems to go anywhere, but I think we should put that in if we're making comments on this.
Yeah, yeah.
I I think it should be standard on all projects, to tell you the truth, so.
I like that suggestion too. I I had a minor question about um the the drainage um. Because it does all drain south, but they they did say. They really weren't able to manage anything that flows back into Salem Street on on the north side and. I I just wondered, um slight, you know, in a slightly. Uh similar way to Matt, your your point about sort of encouraging a best practice, if there's really a. A way of them retaining even more of the of the the storm water that way, they're. I mean, you know, they're they're managing it even, you know, even even more, um and uh. I and building a little more capacity for the future and for future storms, um that might be unpredictable. But I I also don't know like to what extent, right, I mean, you know, how how you. You know, how you might manage um runoff into the street since the everything is so close. And that it would be um similar to the existing conditions. Um I am really happy to um draft a letter and circulated around for everybody's comments. Um and uh make sure I capture all of uh. All of all of the viewpoints.
Does it make sense to talk about the um, does it make sense to talk about the other project and all other people have gone through it? In sufficient detail yet, but um we're being asked to provide comments by December thirteenth, our next meeting's on, sorry, the fourteenth. Our next meeting's on the thirteenth, so unless we are gonna have, you know, have a meeting. Then immediately turn around and have someone write a letter that night, uh it may or may not make sense to have at least like the first. Draft of what we're talking about now, unless people haven't gone through it in sufficient detail.
I have not gone through in in the detail I went through in the Salem one, so in my list of the Salem one. Included a few more things, um I did briefly go through the other one, but not enough to. To make it happen, so I am fine with helping to draft a letter. If we're not prepared tonight to make comments, but um if we want to have that discussion, that's fine, I'll definitely learn, listen.
Uh my, I I've gone through it a little bit, um one of my biggest. Issues out there I think is gonna be is uh that intersection from Broadway onto North Ave is is insufficient as it is. And um you're gonna have a, I know that they're probably gonna say there's no more. Greater traffic flow than what's there, but uh there there is gonna be a lot more and more constant and. Um I think something at Broadway and uh North Ave is gonna need to be improved. Uh you may even start to think about signalizing that because it is a mess trying to get. Pull pulling out there, you still have a lot of people that take uh left turns even though you're not supposed to, but um. The queue to get on to North Ave and then end up stopping at uh. At Main Street is is just a mess at times, uh and then when you factor in people trying to cross kids that are blocking the school. That is one of the most dangerous intersections with people making a right on red without paying attention, yeah, it's it's. Almost impossible to walk across that intersection in the morning without a car, you know. Coming close to hitting people, so if they're gonna be doing something there, I think they need to look at improving that intersection.
Kind of in that same vein, I I had a comment where I. Right now, the way the project is currently accessed, there is a single point of entry. But that tees off into a one way only to service a handful of parking spaces on the front of the property. Which I would advocate for that to be eliminated in the second curb cut. To Matt's point, there's already a lot going on in that section between Broadway. And North Ave and introduce a se- another point of contact with, for lack of a better term, with. With North Ave doesn't make a ton of sense to me, additionally, if you look at our our uh zone of the zoning bylaws. There's a in section one ninety thirty two F five, there's a whole. Section about the between the multifamily property and the adjacent road. Making sure there's an amount of open space, which is materially compromised by having this additional one way with parking and such. Um so I think that would be something that I'd be interested in commenting on and some manner of advocating for that to be omitted. Even if there was a corresponding loss of, I believe, nine parking spaces. Um just because of the flow of traffic and how the rest of the site work comes together. Additionally, in um opposite of the Salem Street project, it doesn't make sense to me how loading of this building works. There's like a very small section that does need is loading, which basically looks like it's. Parallel with the drive aisle for the rest of the building, so it doesn't, didn't seem to kind of pass the sniff test for lack of a better term. Um and again, similarly. Uh you know, sidewalk wasn't con- clear to me if it was continuous along that whole way. And I think that we should also put in writing for this one, I think my calculations for the back of the envelope were would correspond with twenty two affordable. Units, so I think that we should put that um, you know, that we maintain to hold that as something. Um that we issued as a board.
Yeah, I agree that. You should make sure that the eighteen percent rule is uh adhered to and there's no wavering. Uh waivers for that for anything, so um unfortunately, it's happened on other projects and. These projects only put the town further behind in their, you know, affordability, eighteen percent really does not. Pick up the um or or get us closer to what we need to have. Uh it marginally offsets this project, but. Others, we're we're getting further behind with all new housing going in, so.
Hey Matt, can you clarify something you just said there, it doesn't necessarily make sense to me based on my understanding of what we're. What we're trying to do for, you're talking about the forty B, ten percent calcu- calculation?
Um is this forty B or just a regular project? I think it's just a regular housing project, correct? So they're gonna have eighteen percent affordable.
That is correct, so I think, I'm I'm trying to understand, you said that the eighteen percent doesn't help, but I thought the for. For forty B, you have to have ten percent of your overall total housing stock, so if you deliver eighteen percent on. On a project, isn't that helping the cause rather than hurting? I I just not sure if I misunderstood you.
Uh I mean, it does, but we're also adding a lot of units that. Are just below the, you know, we're adding more single and and. And like four units that don't contribute any um affordable units. So for all those that get added in, the bigger projects need to. Pick up the pace even more in order for us to to keep moving ahead, so that's. That's what I'm getting at, so um I don't think the eighteen percent. Really, i- it it keeps us stationary in our goal of of trying to get to that ten percent. I don't think it really adds too much to the overall affordability. In the town of reaching that ten percent goal, that that's what I'm trying to get to.
Gotcha, okay.
That said, should we be advocating for a higher percentage? Perhaps that's not, that's a conversation for another day.
That that is gonna be extremely tough sell, to tell you the truth, so. I mean, the eighteen percent was tough as it was, so. But we're gonna have this issue with when we get into multifamily housing anyways, because. We're gonna be adding more housing and not increasing the affordability, probably much at all, so.
Well, because that the multi, the multifamily overlay is ten percent max for the state.
Yeah, the conversation, uh yeah, a really pesky issue to to wrangle through. Um so solar on ten Broadway two. For sure. So that this is a good start, is there anything else um I can run downstairs and grab, grab my packet? I realize I don't have it in front of me.
The other thing, which I don't know necessarily impacts anything that we specifically looking at, but it is just odd, is there's no unit layouts. Provided with within the packet, um you know, there's an interior plan that shows, you know, barren walls between. The corridor and the balance of where the units would be, but the actual unit layouts aren't shown. So you can't actually go through and validate the unit counts on the civil plans that are noted for the zoning analysis, so. I think that's something that. I mean, if the Z B A doesn't look at that, there. You know, that there'd be a gross oversight in my line, but I'm sure that, and so I'm sure they will, but it is something that's the note that was odd.
It's a good observation. Good deal, um all right, um this is a very helpful beginning. We had one other uh. Item from the Z B A, it was uh for one seventy one Water Street. This was to change the use from a uh a religious establishment to a real estate brokerage, I don't think. Um we had any, any need to comment on that. But if if folks do. Uh the next meeting, we're going to discuss one ninety seven the hot street, it's a a preliminary plan, um. So we'll get more materials on that, um. Um and I think the only other uh item I have, or the only other two items I had to update on. The the master plan, um the transportation um and sustainability uh survey is still open through December eighth. So um encourage y'all and and everybody you know to to take the survey. Um pardon me, the um and the the fifth uh public meeting is scheduled for. February first, um we don't know if it's gonna be virtual or in person, um the in person was. Um I think successful and reasonably well attended, so hopefully, conditions uh. Remain the same so that we can do that again, um and then um. The the planet, uh we'll be able to hear from Aaron at the, you know, the next couple of meetings, sort of uh the timeline for the the remainder of the master plan, but. Um it will be drafted and then opportunities for a lot more uh public review, questioning. The uh Aaron sent out a reminder about um uh online classes from C T P C. Um so um just uh if if any of us have time, I. I've signed up for uh two, so I'm looking forward to those. And uh the last item I had was just thinking ahead on the calendar, um. I was uh expecting us to want to cancel um our the last uh planning meeting um. Uh in the year on December twenty seventh, um I do wonder if that. Poses a potential conflict if we are hearing the this preliminary plan on the. Um on the thirteenth, so I didn't know if uh any of you veterans had any uh advice.
I won't be available for the December, so I think um not that that should change anyone's mind. But in past meetings, in past years, having a skip a meeting didn't really affect. The endorsing or accepting of any plans, it would just roll to the next one, we would just have to make sure. That if the date is close, that we would have to extend it, um yeah, yeah, Matt, if you want to add anything to that.
Uh no, I think.
Right, and January tenth is our first meeting of the year, so. Unless there's a special election on that day. Or anything like that, that's Tuesday, the tenth is our first meeting of the year, so um it's pretty quick.
Yeah, okay, good, but I find that reassuring, um okay. I didn't have any anything else, um. If uh does anybody else have any other observations, questions, comments?
Uh one comment, Theo, um I know I mentioned to you in person, but I really appreciate a town meeting. Your plug, um of course, the moderator picked that up too, but I I really, really like that, so thank you. I don't know if anybody got to see that, I know Matt and Jimmy were there, Megan, I wasn't sure if you were there, but Theo, after he. The street naming, all that stuff, he just continued to make a plug for. Um showing up at the planning board meetings and the interest in the master plan and all that stuff, so it was it was nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh no, not gonna let go of the mic, thank you, uh easily, yeah. Fantastic, um well, uh I I I appreciate it and I.
Susan, do you have something or?
Yeah.
So is December twenty seventh happening?
No.
No, no.
Yeah. Wait, wait. All right, um good stuff, all right. So if there, since there are no other items to be discussed, um love to hear a motion to adjourn, um and uh. Wish, you know, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Terrific, um. All right, all in favor, um Megan?
Yes.
All right, Matt?
Yes.
Uh Jim?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so um thank you, everybody, um. Uh I am, I am hoping uh that maybe we'll, we will get uh an in-person meeting at some point.
Thanks.
All right, safe.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Bye.
Yeah, I'm trying to click the right button, have a good night, Susan.
You too.